Very good. Morning. Welcome. Appreciate you guys interested in our captain's recruitment process. I'm Jeff Bender. I've been the fire chief here in the city of Loma Linda. And Tim McCarg has been the fire chief of the city of Colton. This process is a little unique in that it's a single testing process from which both cities will have a list for captain promotion. On Colton's side, that's an internal process. On the Loma Linda's side, right now, we happen to be in that situation where we've had to open it up to the outside. Doesn't seem to be as unique as it used to be. It's going on around the area. Long-term, we'd like to see that eventually be a process that is always internal, but however, at this time, it's an open external recruitment, which is why you're here and which is also why we want to share a little bit of information about the organization, some of our principles and thoughts and how we operate, just to make sure all that lines up with some of the philosophies of you and make sure really this is still where you would like to end up and pursue a career. Also, a part of the uniqueness to this is that these two cities, city of Loma Linda and Colton, have been moving towards and are now in a, formally in a functional consolidation. So under that umbrella of East Valley Fire Department, the cities of Loma Linda operate a fire department, and the city of Colton operates their fire department under a single management unit. So, we leverage that opportunity whenever we can. So, in an instance like this, when we're creating promotional lists, a single training division puts together a single testing process. On our entry level, it's actually now a single test from which both cities, both cities hire off of one list. However, for promotionals, it still is a separate process. So, anyway, that is kind of roughly what we're doing together, how this is lining up. Chief McCarg has actually brought some materials to share, is going to talk a little bit about some of the philosophy of Loma Linda, Colton, or East Valley Fire moving forward, and kind of where we've been, and talk about some of our strategic plans. So, anyway, Chief McCarg and Chief Gillette, will you be doing the reference material? Information? Okay. All right. Anyway, Chief McCarg.
Use the podium here.
Don't move it.
Do we turn it around? You know what? Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. Great. It's all tied down with wires. Okay. Okay, thanks. Welcome, gentlemen. My name's Tim McCarg. I'm the fire chief for Colton. As Chief Bender said, I'm also the fire chief for the East Valley Fire Department, which is our functional consolidation. So, the purpose of today is for me to give you some leaders intent, so that you understand where we're going with this test, you can understand the organization a little bit better, and then I'm going to give you an opportunity to ask me some questions. So, as we go through, this will be pretty low-key. So, the first thing I want to talk about is the history of the East Valley Fire. Chief Bender touched on it a little bit. So, East Valley Fire came about and has started really since the early 1970s. So, at that time, Colton and Loma Linda have always worked very, very closely together. In the 1970s, they started talking about, could there be some sort of consolidation that we could put together that would somehow leverage resources? So, they talked about it off and on since that time, and then issues became ripe for this functional consolidation about four years ago. So, the economy started taking a dump. That provided a push factor to push us towards doing something closer together. And about 2011, I was moved to an administrative battalion chief position. I was a battalion chief ship B C at the time, and we started putting that thing together. Chief Hendricks, the former chief in Colton, retired, and then we got into a fast track of really pushing this thing. And last year, or excuse me, in the, what was it? April of 2013, May of 2013 is when we formally started East Valley Fire. And as we've gone through that process, what that has meant is, we started combining our training manuals. We have a single training manual. We have a single policy manual. We share resources across the way. So, you'll have Colton captains working in Loma Linda. You have Loma Linda captains working in Colton, and they'll be assigned for a year at a time. We have paramedics crossing back and forth, engineers crossing back and forth, B C coverage. We have two ship B Cs that are Colton B Cs, and one ship B C that's a Loma Linda B C, and all the B Cs are housed in the city of Colton. So, what we've done is, is we have doubled our capacity to manage the organization for no additional cost to either city. So, that's a huge savings. So, we have quite a robust management staff now, and it costs us nothing more. So, what it does cost us is stress and worry and concern, because if we would have known how complex this process was, I think it would have scared me off. But fortunately, ignorance is bliss, so as we jumped in, we said, you know, let's do this. We moved through it. We were hand in glove with the unions, so that's worked out very, very well for us. We've had some hiccups, but we are moving ahead. So, this process is being watched all over the county. There's similar processes going on. Montclair and Upland are doing something similar. Brea and Fullerton are doing something similar. Lemon Grove, La Mesa, and El Cajon are doing the Heartland Fire Model. Down in San Diego, it's very similar. So, we've taken a lot of the different policies and procedures from those organizations, put them together for us, and come up with our own hybrid. So, that's where we're at. With that, I would like to go over our strategic plan. So, we hand a couple of these out. Do you guys make sure everybody gets a copy? And the purpose of giving you this is, I wanted to review with you our mission, vision, and core values, because that's what guides our organization. So, if you go on page four, when everybody gets this. Thanks, Jason. Everybody got a copy? Okay, switch over to page four. And page four is very, very important, because this is how you're going to decide if you fit in this organization. Okay? If you don't fit in to the mission, vision, and core values, and I'm going to read through these, if you don't line up with those, then you really just need to withdraw your application, because this is this important to us. Okay? Very, very important. Where we came up with our mission, vision, and core values in the strategic planning process. Am I moving too much? Am I moving around my head? Okay, sorry. I wander and the camera won't take me. Our mission, vision, and core values came out of our strategic planning process, and this strategic plan was just written and was adopted in April of this year. And how the strategic planning process works is, this plan does not belong to the fire chief. This plan belongs to all of our personnel, because all of our personnel are the ones that wrote the plan. So, we got together, we had over 40 hours' worth of planning that went into writing our mission, vision, and core values. The mission, vision, and core values are what we hold ourselves accountable to. So, if you wonder, you know, what is this organization about? You pull this up, and this is going to tell you exactly what the organization's about. Have we disciplined people based on this? Yes, we have. You can hold me to this standard, and I'm going to hold you to this standard, and we're going to hold each other to this standard. This is if you become a captain with this organization, this is the benchmark that you're going to judge your subordinates on. Okay? So, it's very important to us. So, the mission of the Colton and Loma Linda Fire Department, it's the mission of the Colton and Loma Linda Fire Department to protect life property and the environment in order to preserve and improve the quality of life of those we serve. Our vision, and our vision is where we're going. We're not there yet, but this is where we're going. Fire Department will provide comprehensive emergency services to our citizens, visitors, and employees. Here's important part right here. We will cultivate leaders at all levels of the department through education, training, and high ethical standards. We will treat all others as we would want to be treated. Okay? Cultivating leaders is a major part of what we do. Okay? Every single day. The way we conduct ourselves, the way we act, the way we treat our patients and our customers, we're cultivating leaders within the organization, because that's where our culture comes from. Okay? Very, very important for you to understand that. Our core values. These are the core values we have chosen to hold, which form the foundation on which we perform work and conduct ourselves. These values underlie our work, how we interact with each other, and which strategies we employ to fulfill our mission. These are the practices we use every day in everything we do. So, number one, we believe in putting the community first. It's the spirit that guides all actions of the fire department. The safety of our citizens and personnel above all interests. Providing not only emergency care, but also personal care and services. Every one of the emails that comes out of my office has that on the bottom of it. Personal care and service is what we do. Exceling in the delivery of our fundamental services, fire suppression and EMS. Mentoring our members through excellent leadership at all levels of the organization. And let's stop right there. Anybody that works for this organization has heard me say this like a broken record, so if you come and work for us, you're going to hear it from me all the time. The captain is the king of the fire department. Okay? Captain's king of the fire department. Now, why do I say that? I'm going to tell you why. The reason I say that is I can come up with all sorts of policies. The chief officers can have our meetings and come up with all kinds of great ideas, but unless the company officers buy into the ideas that we come up with and implement those ideas, are they going to get implemented? The answer is no. And if you, as a company officer, don't buy into what we're doing, you're not going to be able to implement it. And then what's going to happen? Then we're going to have all sorts of unintended consequences that come out. So, the captain is the most important position in the fire department. Is more important than the fire chief, is more important than the B C, because that captain is the one that's there at 3:00 in the morning. You're going to hear me talk about 3:00 in the morning, go out on a call, grandma falls off the toilet, gets stuck between the toilet and the bathtub. We go out there, it's your 15th call of the shift. How are you going to treat grandma? Okay? How are you going to treat her? Well, I'll tell you how you're going to treat her. You're going to treat her like she's your A number one concern, and you're going to make sure that your company does the same thing, even if it's your 15th call of the day. Okay? That's why the captain's king of the fire department, because I can't be there, because I'm going to be at home asleep, because I'm going to be stressed out from a council meeting or some budget meeting. But that's where you guys come in. Very, very important to understand that. Strengthening local, regional, and intergovernmental partnerships to provide services beyond our local ability. We have to work with our cooperators. So, we had a little four-acre job in Colton yesterday. We had Rialto there, San Bernardino there, county there. We had Rialto there. We had the sheriff there. We have got to be able to get along with others. We are too small to do it on our own. That's pretty much a given, but it's important enough that we put in our core values. Here's our next core value. It's very important. Maintaining the organizational culture of trust, respect, and efficiency through the mutual cooperation of labor and management. Okay? Our relationship with Local 935, which is the union for both Colton and Loma Linda, is very, very important. Every one of our staff meetings, the union is present. Okay? Our staff meetings start at 8:30. We're usually done hopefully at noon or 1:00. The union comes in at 10:30. So, everything that we do, we work hand in glove with the union. Okay? Do we always agree? Nope. We don't always agree. But, the union has input in what we do. If you come here and you come from another department and you have a different culture, and your culture is such that the union is constantly at odds with the management, then just know if you come here, you're going to have to change, because that's not the way we work. Okay? And I'll tell you, I'm not going to let somebody come in here that's going to interject problems for us in the level of labor and management. Okay? Because I'd rather just leave a position unfilled and fill it with overtime. So, if you have that history, please know you're going to have to come in and learn our culture. Whatever culture you have, when you come in here, you're going to have to learn our culture. Very, very important. Okay? Because we're not going to change. We're not going to change. We have put this culture together. We have put it together very, very intentionally. We go through a lot of work to bring people in. We go through a lot of work to maintain that relationship with the union. The union can call me at any time. They called me just Saturday. Wanted to talk to me about something. So, there's an open door, but we're going to maintain that culture, and this core value talks to that. So, just be thinking about that as you go through the process. The next core value, ensuring transparent stewardship of the public's trust, resources, and expectations. So, what that means is, is we operate with an open door. If any council member or citizen wants to come in my office and see anything we do, there's nothing hidden in the East Valley Fire Department. Everything we do, people can come ask. They can come ask, why do you staff the way you do? Why do you fill your overtime the way you do? Why do you go out to eat the way you go out to eat? Why is it that you do what we do? We have nothing to hide. Okay? Very important. And then the last thing is respecting the contributions of past generations while embracing innovation. One of the things you'll hear me talk about, and I've got some more of these for the guys who just walked in, if you don't look at it, I think even mostly are people. Innovation. Okay? Right now, we're, and all of us are in very, very difficult financial times. Some people are coming out of the financial crisis. Some people are staying into it. One of the things that we operate as, the way we operate, is that innovation is a cornerstone of who we are. I'm in a graduate program right now. One of the classes I just took, they did a study on businesses that are succeeding since 2009. And what they found was, innovation is more important than cost-cutting for companies to survive. Okay? Because you can only cut so much. So, as you come into the organization, if you're successful, then you've just got to know, innovation is what we do. So, we think of things. Now, some of the things that we do in a research and development mode don't work out. Some of them do, but we go through that process, and you have to be flexible enough to allow for that. And sometimes it gets frustrating. I mean, the East Valley Fire concept was innovative, and as we went through it, there was no playbook. Okay? We call that the adaptive challenge. So, the technical challenge is something that has a very, very easy solution. The adaptive challenge doesn't have an easy solution. We have to find that. We're looking for people that have adaptive mentalities, that can look at things and know that innovation is so, so very important for our survival. If you look at other departments in this area, in this valley, they're fighting for their lives right now. Okay? They're fighting for their lives. So, when you think of FALC, FALC is a private company out there, FALC could easily come in and take over a fire department. Okay? They're wanting to turn a profit, and trust me, if FALC comes in here, do you think they're going to pay what we're getting? No, they're not. So, we have to make sure as an organization that we provide a service to our community so that they say, you're not touching my fire department. You're not touching my fire department. And how does that happen? That happens every time that we go out and pick up grandma when she falls off the toilet. And we make sure we tuck her back in bed, we water her plants, we put the cat out, we do whatever we got to do to make sure we have a happy customer. That's the way we operate. That's the organization that you're applying to. Okay? So, it's important for you to know that. Okay. Why are we going outside? So, in Loma Linda, we have hired, how many captains have we hired from outside?
Definitely. How many have you hired?
Three?
Or four.
Okay. We've had so many captain openings on the Loma Linda's side, we ran out of candidates. Okay? And that's a very, very tricky thing, because I'll tell you right now, as a fire chief, I never, ever, ever want to promote from outside the organization. If we're doing our job, if we're doing the proper succession planning, the only level that we hire is entry level. But we have grown so much that we've had to go outside. Okay? Going outside is a risk for us, because we're getting somebody that has a different culture that's coming into the organization, and I don't know what that culture is. And that's why we're having this talk, to talk to you about that culture. So, it's very important for us to maintain our culture. So, the reason that we're going outside is because we've had so many promotions inside. If any of you know Tim Bruner, he got hired here as a captain. He's now a battalion chief. So, he came in as a captain, went through the battalion chief testing process, did very, very well, and is now a B C. I want you guys to also understand, I am looking for the next fire chief. Okay? I've got about eight to 10 years to go, and when I go, we've got to make sure that succession planning has been operated in the proper way, so that everybody just bumps up. So, hopefully, you guys are the last group of outside candidates to be hired in this organization. Looks like right now, we have two spots. Does that be right, Jeff? We have one for sure. We have another opening possibly due to some injuries, and we may have another spot open due to retirement. So, there could be some still movement, and this could be a really good list for you. Okay, let's talk about strategy. If history is any predictor of the future, about 50% or more of you will fail the written test. Okay? And you'll come in, you'll take the written test for whatever reason, you won't do the proper studying that's necessary, and you're going to fail. Okay? So, if you want to pass, I'm going to give you the little magical secret, and this is an equation. Time plus effort equals success. Okay? So, the time is, how much time are you going to spend studying for the written test? Okay? I mentioned I was in a graduate, I'm in a graduate program right now. The class that I'm in right now, the instructor told us, if you invest 40 hours of study time, you will pass the final. Okay? I want to tell you guys, if you invest 40 hours in studying the written materials that Chief Gillette's going to talk to you about, your likelihood of success is going to increase exponentially. Okay? Unless you are some magical individual that maintains this body of knowledge and doesn't need to test, unless you put in about 40 hours, whether that's time you've already spent or time you spent starting today, you're going to fail. And again, if the past is any predictor of the future, 50% of you are going to fail, probably higher. Okay? The effort. The effort part is where you go and you tell your significant other, your wife, your girlfriend, your family, whoever, for the next two weeks or whatever, I've got to spend time preparing for this test. And that means that I'm not going to be able to go over to grandma's house, I'm not going to be able to do this, that, or the other thing, and you're going to clear your calendar. Okay? I passed the CPS test. I took it in 1996. I had a stack of three-by-five cards, about 500 of them, that I just went through over and over and over again. That's how you pass. You can talk to any of our captains that have passed the written test, and you ask them what they've invested, and they've invested time and effort. So, this isn't a mystery, and I'll just tell you, as the chief, it's very frustrating to me to see people take the written and continue to have such a high failure rate. And the only thing that I can think of is, they think that they have this intuitive knowledge. Okay? And I'm here to tell you, most likely, you're not special, just like I wasn't special. So, that's how you're going to pass. And the reason that I talk about this again is because our failure rate on the written is so high. And it's not because the test is so hard, it's because you're not investing the time. We had several captains in Colton take the written, fail it, and all of a sudden, they figured out, or they weren't captains, they were engineers, all of a sudden, they figured out, you know what? I've got to study to pass. And out of the nine that failed it, or excuse me, seven that failed it, six passed it the next time. So, they finally got the memo. It's like, this is a serious test. With that, that's all I have on my three-by-five cards. I think that means it's time for me to shut up. So, I would like to entertain any questions that you have. And again, as you ask questions, you'll hear us talk about the ugly baby in this fire department. And the ugly baby is, is anything that we have that we think is a good project that's not working well. So, we ask the ugly baby questions. If I come up with some half-baked scheme, that's my baby, and I hold it there, and I ask our crews, is this an ugly baby? And they need to be able to tell me, chief, I know you think you've got a pretty baby, but that baby is ugly. Okay? That's how we operate here. So, if you guys have any questions that you think is some ticklish question or something you shouldn't ask, or whatever, ask it. Okay? Who's first?
Chief, what's the prospect of getting an outside bid from San Bernardino County? Is it a dead issue? Or has that stuff still out there? Some of the pastors have got some talk with possible county, want to pay more by San Bernardino. What's your thoughts on that?
So, in Colton, we received a bid from San Bernardino County two, three years ago, and they were a half million dollars more than what we were doing it for. Loma Linda has also received a bid from county fire. I can tell you this, our councils love their fire department. Our city loves our fire department. And with that, I do not see that as a threat. Could there be questions about that? Absolutely. And if the councils want to know, yeah, go for it. You can check, but I don't see that on our horizon. Good question.
Chief, what's the timeline for the full consolidation between Colton, Loma Linda, as far as, or that they're one department?
Okay, that's a good question. So, since this is an adaptive challenge, there's no handbook for what we're doing. So, what I see happening is, so right now, everybody has their own M O U. We're probably going to stay in that method. So, if you work for Loma Linda, you get paid through Loma Linda. We have not commingled our monies. We may live there forever. I'm not sure. We're getting ready to have an office over here. I'll have an office here in Loma Linda. East Valley Fire will be based out of the city of Loma Linda. We're building ourselves such that we're modular, so we can grow. So, if there's other cities that are interested, and I've had interest from other cities, we'll entertain that, and we could grow that. As far as if it's ever going to be a single organization, I don't think so. I don't think we're going to see our monies commingled like that. So, what I anticipate is, at some point, you're going to have a single fire chief over the whole operation, and a single command staff, which is what we have right now. We have two fire chiefs, and they're actually deputy chiefs, so we're moving things around, but as far as each city losing its own fire department, that's not going to happen. Because that's the other thing. The citizens of Colton, they like seeing this patch. The citizens of Loma Linda like seeing that patch. We'll be getting a new patch, and the command staff will have our East Valley Fire patch on this side, and we'll have our home city patch on this side. So, I don't know, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're welcome. Who else?
Talking about cross-staffing and how, like, the lower of our department, the tech levels, they're going back and forth, and they, with their captains, they need to be on, I mean, everybody, your bases.
How it works is, when we have a vacancy, you try to fill it with the home agency. So, they'll go through the home agency, and if there's nobody in the home agency that can work the vacancy, then before they force hire, they'll open up to the other agency. So, they'll go to the other agency and see if there's somebody that's willing to work, and if they're willing to work, then they'll come over. We do have right now the EMS captain. Captain Henry Perez is paid for by Loma Linda. He's in a 40-hour position, but we have a Loma Linda captain that's filling his spot in Colton. So, he's assigned there. We've also made assignments for six months or a year at a time, so we're kind of toying with that right now. But we have people that will spend a year in the other agency. In Loma Linda, we have a 40-hour engine that works Monday through Thursday? Monday through Friday? Monday through Friday. And so, we have captains that are assigned to that, and they work a 40-hour position, get to go home every night. So, you'll have Colton captains on that engine or Loma Linda captains. So, it's very, very common to have everybody moved across. Yesterday, we had Water Tender 251, Con Sindejas, he's one of our captains. He was the captain on the Loma Linda Water Tender yesterday. So, it's happening very, very frequently. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Chief McCarg, can you elaborate on the day engine and how it's going to be involved with you?
Okay, yeah, that's good. Thanks, Dana. Thanks, Dana. The day engine in Loma Linda, we have a day engine right now, and the idea is, is Loma Linda's going to need a third fire station. In order to get to that third fire station, you know, to have a fire station takes nine people, so three per shift times three shifts. What we've done is, is we've slowly started adding personnel, so now we have three people that are assigned to the forty-hour engine. We'll add another three at a later date, and then eventually another three, we'll have our nine, and then we'll be able to open a Station 253. So that's a stepped-in process for us to get there. That engine staff right now, the city of Loma Linda about doubles its population during the day, so because of the university. So our call volume goes up during the day. So that's why we have the forty-hour engine, and that's how it's getting stepped in into implementation for a third station. Anybody else? Okay. You have any other questions, feel free to contact us. You can call me direct in Colton. Anything we can do, I would strongly suggest coming to both departments and meeting with personnel, meeting with B Cs, and doing your homework. And you should be studying right now immensely to pass, and we really, really, really want you to do well. We've done well with our outside candidates. We have. We've picked some really good people that have been an enhancement to the organization, and I'm hoping that some of you are those future candidates. And obviously our internal candidates, too. Don't want to neglect them. Okay? Thanks. Yep, so are you?
Morning. Jeff Gillette, Chief of Training EMS. I'm part of the group that's put together the captain's exam itself. So as Chief McCarry stated, and Chief Bender, it's going to be CPS captain's test. There are two versions of that test. You pick one version, but the study guide is the same for that. So did everybody get the email from Barbara with the study material? Okay, if you stick to that, that's what's on it. No matter what version, as long as you stick to the study material and you go through that, you'll be successful. As far as the rest of it, you succeed in the written portion. Move on to the assessment center. The assessment center is going to be simulator, and the simulator is going to be a captain-level simulator. You have to be comfortable with managing an incident at the captain level. On the simulator, we have an oral interview panel, as well as an in-basket exercise. So with that, we won't have department-specific stuff on there, since it is an outside test. You won't have exact policies. Some of the stuff you may have on there, though, is for instance nationwide or California-wide policy, such as, everybody's familiar with RIC, may have something on RIC, firefighter bill of rights. Those type may be on your exam. But other than that, it won't have a Loma Linda department policy, Colton department policy, those type of things on there. It'll be very generic as far as that. So you have just as good advantage as an internal as an external on the test itself. Any questions on the test? Okay?
One other thing, Dawn just pointed out. I want to make sure that everybody understands, we're going to promote whoever comes out number one. So whether you work for us or work for somebody else, whoever comes out number one on the test is going to get the chance. So I just want all the external candidates to know that, so that you don't think that, you know, that we're outside of our role. So we want the best candidate for this. Anybody else want to talk?
I'm good. Good. Okay, any questions? Open it up for all questions. Go to Dave.
Dave, you'll get to talk.
Go to Dave. I'll give you a few briefs.
You mentioned in-basket.
Yes.
Can you read them?
I cannot elaborate too much, but it'll be a typical in-basket. It's not going to be anything like variance too wide. You will all have seen what is in the in-basket within your career, going onto the fire squad.
Jeff, tell us what an in-basket is.
In-basket can be anything to test your judgment, or time management skills, that sort of thing. Judgment being, if you have a firefighter bill of rights problem, we want to give you a problem and see how your thought process is, how you arrange things, why you put things in certain orders, what makes you tick with that. But we want to see exactly where you're going with things. Time management stuff, if you have a bunch of things on your desk, how do you get through that, through your day? What do you prioritize? Those type of things. And then oral interview is straight oral interview. And when you do the oral interview, we're going through oral interviews right now with firefighter medics, please don't give canned answers. So you're selling yourself short if you give canned answers. So we want to know who you are. So tell us who you are. We're going to make the decision off of that. So we don't want to hear the typical people that are out there giving promotional assessments that are pushing people into what to say, that they think. We want to hear, we want to hear what your true answers are, who you are, what you really do in this situation.